Okay. Jackie, do we have everything ready to go? All right. I would like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, November 13th, 2023, and let's get started with a pledge of allegiance. All rise, please. Okay, thank you. Jackie, can you give us a roll call?
Chair Clowitter. Commissioner Lee.
Excused, I believe.
Thank you. Commissioner Crapman. Commissioner McMorris.
Here.
And Vice Chair Schwartz. Thank you.
Okay, tonight's meeting is livestreamed on Cable Channel 3 and on the city online platforms. To prevent any overlaps in comments, each commissioner will be called upon to speak. Let's see, public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission items of interest that are not on the agenda tonight but are within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please fill out a speaker card, and that's available at the back table. Once completed, you can submit the card to Jackie up here, and speakers will be called to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak tonight. Okay, Jackie, do we have any comments?
We did not receive any, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Get us started, we'll look at the consent calendar. And I believe, bear with me here. Okay, so we have the approval of the minutes from the October 9th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, second? Anybody?
Second.
Okay.
Chair Clowitter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Crapman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Motion passed, four to zero vote.
Okay, thank you. Now for the public hearing instructions. We have Planning Manager Sam Tousart. Give us the direction.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. Copies of the agenda are available on the city's website at www.sangabrielcity.com. And again, on the table that is by the entrance. If you wish to speak on an item this evening and are not the project applicant, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to Jackie this evening. Please write down the item number. And again, speakers will be called up one by one to the podium, and speakers will be given up to three minutes to speak. There are four public hearing items this evening to be considered by the Planning Commission. For each item, staff will provide a summary of the staff report, followed by any clarifying questions from the commission. Also, the applicant will be provided the opportunity to present if there is a presentation or to be available for questions from the commission. Prior to the close of the public hearing, the commission may ask additional questions of staff or the applicant. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. And once the public hearing portion is closed, the item will move into commission deliberation. And with that, Chair Steph is ready to present item 3A.
Okay, very good. Item 3A is for 250 West Valley Boulevard, Suite L. It's planning case number CUP 23-010 for a conditional use permit, and the applicant is Shuru Zhang. And Christine Song has our presentation tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is a request for the approval of a conditional use permit to allow for karaoke and entertainment use at 250 West Valley Boulevard, Unit L, planning case number CUP 23-010. The project site is located on the south side of Valley Boulevard, just west of Abbott Avenue. The property is owned CCT Commercial Center and is within the Valley Boulevard Specific Plan area. The general plan land use designation is Commercial Specific Plan. The site is currently developed with the Life Plaza Shopping Center, which features two levels of commercial uses, ranging from restaurants to retail uses. Both surface and subterranean parking is provided on-site. The karaoke use falls under an entertainment use, which has the same requirements for retail use in terms of parking, which is a lesser requirement than the existing restaurant use, so additional parking spaces would not be required for this request. The project site is located along a highly active part of Valley Boulevard. Life Plaza is occupied by retail, restaurants, offices, personal care, and there is another existing karaoke business, which is Q Dynasty. It's in the same center. It was approved by the Planning Commission in June of 2018, so the proposed use is compatible with the uses surrounding it, and there are other shopping centers in the vicinity with a similar mix of uses to this one. The proposed floor plan shows the six private VIP rooms currently used for dining. It's located along the perimeter of the dining area. These rooms would be used for the karaoke service if approved, and staff has included several conditions of approval that would apply to the new use of these rooms. The existing restaurant serves traditional Chinese cuisine, and the hours of operation are from 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM daily. The restaurant currently holds a Type 41 On Sale Beer and Wine ABC License, which allows them to serve beer and wine for onsite consumption. And in April of 2023, the restaurant added the six private VIP dining rooms through a tenant improvement, and at that time, all the rooms were constructed with soundproofing. So the restaurant operates on a walk-in basis, but the karaoke service would require reservation in advance. San Gabriel Police Department has reviewed the application request and has included several conditions of approval, which are included in the staff report and the resolution in your packets tonight. A few of the conditions include karaoke room shall have clear, unobstructed visibility into the room, and at least 75% of the upper half of the wall should be visible, which that is how it was constructed in April. Installation of a video surveillance system and centrally monitored alarm system. And the karaoke room should not have any locking devices. The proposed use is compatible with the general plan based on economic goal 4.1, creating a vibrant business community. It's also following the land use strategy set forth in the Valley Boulevard Specific Plan. The proposed use would enhance the commercial center and would cater to the local residents and visitors that visit Valley Boulevard. In order for the Planning Commission to approve the karaoke use, all five of the required findings must be made. Staff was able to make all five findings, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. The project is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. Per Guidelines 15301, this is a Class 1 exemption for an existing facility, and there are no exceptions to the exemption that would apply. The public notice for the CUP was given in the following ways. Mailed notices to all property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius, and the window notice was posted at the project site. A hearing agenda was posted at City Hall, the San Gabriel Post Office, and the Public Library, and was advertised in the San Gabriel Sun on October 2nd, 2023. With that, staff is recommending approval to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission, approving planning case number CUP 23-010 for a conditional use permit at 250 West Valley Boulevard, Unit L, for karaoke use, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for questions.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
No questions.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes, they are present.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Tom. I'm the owner. And...
You want to tell us a little bit about your restaurant?
Yes, we are Chinese food, and then a lot of, after COVID, people like more private space, so we make changes to six rooms. So people like to have dinner over there, and then a lot of customers ask us if we can do maybe a little bit of extra, like for example, karaoke. So that's why what we do, we upgrade our restaurant inside a private room to give free karaoke to the customers when they have dinner or birthday party during our restaurant. Yes.
Okay. Have you reviewed the conditions of approval?
Yes.
Part of the package? And any problems with anything there?
No.
No? Very good. Any questions, Commissioner?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. No? Jerry? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Unless you had more that you wanted to say.
Oh, I guess, yeah. No?
You have the floor, if you'd want to...
Oh, okay. Yeah, because, yeah, yeah. I don't know what I should say.
You don't have to say anything.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we just wanted to give extra, you know, to the Valley, to the San Gabriel customers. We give food, very delicious food, and then for the karaoke, just for free, and then to give customer extra, you know, fun, and then extra time to spend over there instead, just a restaurant, normal serve, new ideas.
How are the new rooms working out for you?
We are not even starting yet for the karaoke, so we just hear if we can, and then we will tell you later on, maybe. I think we'll be successful, because right now, from my opinion, is people eating after 9:00, that's no place for them to hang out. So in our restaurants, we provide food and a free karaoke for our customers, so they have more time to spend in our restaurants, eating and extra fun for karaoke for free, you know? Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
I try.
No, you can have a seat now.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We'll continue discussing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comments? Do we have anything that came in, Jack?
We received one.
Okay.
And it's through email from Athena Lee, and she states, "As a customer, I wish this restaurant had private karaoke rooms, especially since there's not much karaoke in San Gabriel City, so I can hang out with my friends and family afterward."
Okay. Okay. And no speaker cards from the audience? Okay. We're going to close the public hearing and open this up for commissioners' discussion. Jerry, you want to kick us off?
Sure. I don't see any reason not to allow karaoke. Police have looked at it, they've got requirements that will, you know, help with visibility and some others. If the existing restaurant feels that their customers will be better served having karaoke, then they won't, you know, stuff in.
Okay. Sean?
Yeah, I just, I think karaoke is a pretty popular leisure activity in this area, and so I think, you know, it's, it'll be a draw for the city, for that particular restaurant, and I don't see any reason not to approve it, so.
Great, thanks. Matt?
I agree with what Eric said.
Okay, as do I. Okay. I will go ahead and move to adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission, approving planning case number CUP 23-010 for a conditional use permit to allow an existing restaurant to add six private karaoke rooms at 250 West Valley Boulevard, Unit L, subject to the attached recommended conditions of approval. Do we have a second?
Yep, I'll second.
Okay.
Chair Clowitter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
And Commissioner Crapman. The vote is four to zero, motion carried.
Okay, very good. Congratulations, and best of luck to you as you expand your services. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You bet. Okay, we've got a full agenda tonight, so we're going to try and keep moving here. Item B, 407 South San Gabriel Boulevard, planning case number CUP 23-008 for a conditional use permit. Applicant Lok Wong, and our associate planner is Marlon Cervantes.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. The public hearing item before you tonight is for a conditional use permit for a parking reduction for an existing commercial shopping center located at 407 South San Gabriel Boulevard, planning case number CUP 23-008. The project site is made up of two properties located on the west side of South San Gabriel Boulevard, between Augustino Road to the north and Commercial Avenue to the south. The combined properties total 26,250 square feet and are currently developed with three commercial buildings totaling 12,406 square feet. The subject property is Zoned C1 for retail commercial. Nearby properties are Zoned C1, C3, and R3. The property is currently developed with three commercial buildings and a total of 43 paved and marked parking spaces, shared amongst the tenants of each of the three buildings, as shown on the existing site plan above. A review of the originally approved plans and parking calculations for the commercial center identifies the total building area as 10,706 square feet, with all of the proposed uses being general, retail, or office use. Based on the total area and the parking ratio of one space per 250 square feet, the total requirement was calculated at 43 parking spaces. Further evaluation of the plans, however, finds that the actual building area is 12,406 square feet, which would have required a minimum of 50 spaces. The applicant is proposing to operate a medical spa in Unit 407A of the commercial shopping center, which measures 1,250 square feet. The proposed business would provide cosmetic medical treatments, including Botox injections, dermal fillers, medical facials, and chemical peels, all under the supervision of licensed medical professionals. This proposed use is allowed by right in the C1 zone. The subject tenant space was most recently occupied by a hair salon. The ratio for personal service type uses, such as hair salons, is calculated at a rate of one space per 250 square feet, which would require, which required five spaces. Medical uses in the C1 zone, however, require one space per 200 square feet, which would require an additional two spaces. The parking requirement for the commercial shopping center is calculated based on the use and size for each tenant space. The business names, type, and size of the businesses shown on this table have been obtained from business license records. The total number of parking spaces that are required for the commercial center, including the proposed medical spa, is a total of 56 spaces, creating a deficiency of 13 spaces or 23.3%, which is the parking reduction being requested for this CUP application. The request for the CUP is being made per Section 153.220H5 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code, which allows for up to a 40% reduction in parking for a shared parking facility if the following findings are made: that the peak hours of the use will not overlap or coincide to the degree that peak demand exceeds the total supply of parking spaces; that the provided, or excuse me, that the parking provided will be adequate to serve each use; that a parking demand study is prepared by an independent traffic engineering professional, supports the reduction; and that in the case of a shared parking facility that serves more than one property, that a legally acceptable covenant is executed and recorded to guarantee the maintenance of the required spaces. Parking demand study has been provided by the applicant and reviewed by staff, indicating that the peak parking demand for the commercial shopping center. The study was conducted by counting the number of occupied parking spaces at 15-minute intervals on one weekday and one weekend day. The results show that during the week, peak parking demand occurs between 2:15 and 2:30 PM, with 26 spaces or 60% of the spaces being occupied. During the weekend, the peak occurred between 3:30 and 3:45 PM, with 23 of the spaces or 53% being occupied. With the additional requirement of seven spaces for the proposed medical use, the peak demand is calculated at a total of 33 spaces, leaving 10 available spaces during the busiest time. Staff also, staff reviewed the request for consistency with the San Gabriel General Plan and found it to be consistent with Mobility Goal 3.2 and Economic Development Goal 4.1. The proposed project was also reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and was determined to be exempt per Guidelines Section 15301, Class 1 for existing facilities, and Section 15305, Class 5 for minor alterations and land use limitations. On November 2nd, a notice regarding the public hearing for this project was mailed to all property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius of the project site, posted on the project site, and published in the November 2nd, 2023 edition of the San Gabriel Sun. Additionally, the meeting agenda was also posted at City Hall and on the city's website. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel, approving planning case number CUP 23-008 to allow parking reduction for an existing commercial building at 407 South San Gabriel Boulevard, with the added condition that a covenant shall be recorded prior to final occupancy, guaranteeing that no less than 43 parking spaces shall be maintained on the, on the subject properties. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions.
I have a quick question. Do we know what the occupancy is on the entire building?
I reviewed business license records when working on the staff report. Currently, this is the only vacant unit.
It is? Okay, so the, with the parking studies at various times, they never witnessed a full lot?
No, based on the study, it never exceeded 60% capacity.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
The KOA study was done by the, developed by the applicant or by the city?
It was paid for by the applicant. It's requested by the city as part of the CUP application.
Go ahead, Sean.
So I'm assuming the other occupants were made aware of the, it seems like there might have been initially an error in the number of parking that were initially required, so they were made aware of that, but then also the amount of parking that this particular new business would typically, the number of spaces they would have to have. And now they're asking for a reduction, and they'll be sharing. Are the other, did any of the other occupants raise any concerns about maybe not having enough spaces with this new business, or did anything like that come up with any of them?
So they were notified, the tenants, as part of the public hearing process. We do notify property owners and tenants. We did not receive any comments from any of the tenants.
Okay, well, I'll assume then that they are probably okay with sharing the spots.
No news is good news.
That's correct, so, right, it wouldn't allow, and it wouldn't allow any further loss of additional spaces, be it through additional landscaping or additional construction of any floor area for the, for the building.
Okay. Thanks, Marla.
Sure.
Okay. Going to open this up for public comment, and Jackie, do we have any speaker cards on this one? Nope. Okay. Anybody in the audience feel the urge to speak on this item?
I believe the applicant is available.
Okay. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening. My, my name is Lok Wong. I'm the applicant, but I'm not the owner. I, I applied for the owner. His name is Sean Sang. He anticip, he told me, he anticipated that he wouldn't be in the country during the time that the application would be reviewed. So I heard, last I heard from him on Friday, that he was still in Germany. So I didn't have anything prepared, but he said that he would have one of his partners, a doctor, who would be able to answer any questions you might have regarding the operation of the business and all the medical side of it. So if you have any other questions on other parts, I'll try my best to answer.
Okay, yeah, I think we're actually more concerned about parking. But no, we, we thank you for having your business in the City of San Gabriel.
Thank you.
Any, any questions from the panel?
No, I think the empirical study kind of tells, tells the truth, and just kind of follow it from there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stick around for a few minutes in case we have a question.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, we're going to close the public comment section and open this up for commissioners' comments. I'll start on this one. It's, I agree with you, Matt, it's pretty much in black and white here on the, on the page. And then also the, you know, time of day and the occupancy of the, of the facilities. I think there's no reason to put a roadblock on this one. Jerry? Your thoughts?
No, I, the, to me, the KOA study sort of, I think, makes it clear for me that the project within the map would be, oh, would be fun. This, this is going to be fun.
Yeah, no, I, my primary concern was if any of the other occupants were concerned about maybe being squeezed or losing parking for their business, but it doesn't seem like they have that concern, so I'm, like I said, I'm assuming that they're okay with it and that everyone will, the applicant included, be good neighbors and try to share spots with everybody and make it work, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Very good.
I move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Chair Clowitter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schwartz. Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
And Commissioner Crapman.
Yes.
The vote is four to zero, motion passed.
Okay, very good. Congratulations, and good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item 3C is 5623 South Gladys Avenue, planning case number ANX23-001, which is an annexation, GPA 23-001, which is a general plan amendment, and ZC23-001, which is a zone change. This should be fun. The applicant is Alex Alvarez, and Samantha, you've got the floor tonight.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. This application is a unique application. The application before the Planning Commission is an annexation and pre-zoning, as mentioned. The property owner seeks to file an application with the local agency formation commission for the county of Los Angeles. for the County of Los Angeles, also known as LAFCO, to initiate proceedings to change the boundary lines for the subject property from the County of Los Angeles to the City of San Gabriel, so this is a unique and uncommon application. The subject property, as shown on the aerial map, is approximately 7,500 square feet, and is currently developed with an 873-square-foot, single-story, single-family dwelling and a detached garage. On the Los Angeles County zoning map, the property is currently zoned R1 single-family. The subject property is located in San Gabriel's sphere of influence. The property owner and the applicant also owns nine other parcels within this block between East Las Tunas Drive to the north, East Live Oak Avenue to the south, South San Gabriel Boulevard to the west, and North Gladys Avenue to the east. The only parcel not owned by the property owner would be the corner property that is on the East Live Oak and South San Gabriel, so that southern corner parcel. To the north, and this may be better, this is San Gabriel's current general plan land use map. The properties to the north, south, and west are currently commercial properties, retail, commercial, C1. As far as land use, to the north of the single-family property is a vacant auto body dealership that's currently not in operation. There is parking, go back to the first slide, there's parking there to the south, and again to the west are existing one-story commercial buildings. So, again, the annexation includes a pre-zoning requirement, and what that involves would be a general plan land use amendment to the current plan, since under the County of Los Angeles, it is residential, and annexing the property would, for consistency, would require the property, the general plan land use to be amended from residential to commercial, and then also the zoning from R1 single-family to C1 retail commercial, which would make it consistent with the rest of the block, and also that section of the City of San Gabriel. And with the recommendation to the city council, this would be a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the city council, it would allow the property to be consistent with the city's land use element, also with the housing element, and, and for economic development purposes, as well as for the community design. The environmental, the project was reviewed for environmental consistency with, with the California Environmental Quality Act, there is a Section 15319 that exempts annexations of existing facilities and lots. And this application was noticed to properties within a 500 radius, as well as posted at the subject property. This also includes a photo of the existing home that's on the site, and the application was published in the San Gabriel Sun. So, the recommendation before the Planning Commission this evening is to adopt the attached resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, recommending that the city council approve planning case number ANX 23-001, GPA 23-001, and ZC 23-001, again for the annexation and pre-zoning of the property located at 5623 North Gladys Avenue, subject to the recommended conditions in the resolution, and the amendments will not go into effect until approved by LAFCO. This concludes staff's presentation.
I have a quick question, and that is, did every one of the properties on that side of the street have to be annexed at one time or another?
Yes.
So this is the, the last one?
Yes.
When you get a commercial use, does that mean, does that, the single-family reservation is not?
That's correct, as it exists, and what will bring it into conformity is upon the development of the site, and the applicant can speak more to that.
I just had some clarifying questions, so.
Go ahead, Sean.
The, wasn't quite clear to me, the other single-family homes, those are part of San Gabriel, right? Or they're part of the county, LA County?
On the east side of the street?
On the east side.
On the east side is, is County of Los Angeles.
I had no idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a weird little pocket, isn't it? Yeah.
Wow, okay, and then so, and then the other question was, well, I, the applicant owns essentially that whole block except that, that building in the southeast or southwest corner, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. Let's see, is, is there an applicant for this? Okay. Are you here? Come on up.
Good evening, Chairman Clowitter, members of the commission, staff members. I've been asked to represent Mr. Alvarez with this particular agenda item. I was actually going to bring up this very same question that you brought up, Chairman, with regard to the previous number of residential units that were on Gladys that were a part of the county, for at some point, they were annexed into the City of San Gabriel. The, there's no reason why the other one shouldn't have been, other than maybe the resident was resistant to that. The, the sad part of this whole thing is, I remember when those houses were there, and it's been quite a few years. But this project is moving forward, it's in its final phase of putting together the preliminary precise plan of design to be submitted to the city. The project would obviously not work if this particular parcel were not annexed into the City of San Gabriel. We have reviewed the staff report, it's very complete, and also the recommended conditions of approval, and we agree to them all.
Okay. Just answered all my questions, anybody else?
Since you brought it up, the, will there, will there be housing that will be going in there? Is that the plan, a multi, or, I'm sorry, I guess, what is it, it's mixed-use commercial? So, yeah, so would it be a mixed-use development, then? Is that what the plan is?
Yes, Commissioner McMorris, it, it's going to be a mixed-use project. Again, we're in the final phase of defining exactly the numbers, but suffice it to say that it'll be retail-commercial in, in combination with a large residential component.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Jackie, do we have any speakers on this one?
No, we didn't receive any.
Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public comment, and let's open this up for commissioners' discussion. I've been doing this for a long time, and I haven't seen this one before. So, yeah, this is just interesting. I would love to, to, to see the history of when and why and how, and all this kind of tumbled from, from a county area to an annexed City of San Gabriel. Also, just a weird, not weird, but interesting little pocket of, of the county area that you just don't, I've been looking at city maps for a long time, and it just never jumped out at me until you have to deal with it. So, anyway, this is just very unique, and, and I don't see any reason why I would stand in the way of it. Matt, any ideas?
Yeah, it would be interesting to see the history, because history unfolds in strange ways.
It does.
There's, there's just a total patchwork over on that side of the, of the city. And I think having everything under one jurisdiction makes a lot of sense, and it would obviously facilitate development and housing for the citizens of San Gabriel, so it's kind of a slam dunk.
It's all good, yeah. Jerry?
Well, I agree. I, I agree with you first, because this is the first time in my tenure on the commission that we've dealt with a, a case like this. And the applicant's comfortable, and, maybe, you know, then, I, I don't see where, where we have any reason to stand in the way.
Sean.
No, I pretty much agree with my fellow commissioners, and it certainly is an interesting case, but I also agree that, you know, if, if there are plans there to, to develop that area, you know, that, that kind of has to be next to accommodate whatever plans they're, they're attempting to do, so, and I don't see any reason to deny the request, so.
Okay. Go ahead and move to approve, adoption of a resolution of the Planning Commission, recommending that the city approve planning case NOS, numbers, I'm sorry, NAX 23-001, GPA 23-001, and ZC 23-001, for the property located at 5623 North Gladys Avenue, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. End of vote.
Chair Clowitter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schwartz. Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
And Commissioner Krupman.
Yes.
The vote is four to zero, motion carried.
Very good, thank you. Congratulations. Best of luck with your future plans. Okay. All right, moving right along here. Item 3D is 201 to 217 San Gabriel Boulevard, and, let's see, planning case, you know, I'm gonna let you do that, Sam. All right?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. This is an application, or multiple applications, for a zone change, ZC 22-001, this is to amend an existing plan development overlay, DA 22-001 for development agreement, and TMAP 22-015 for a revised tentative map number 73153. So, on the other side of the spectrum, to the unique application that, that has, is, does not come before the Planning Commission too often, and also on the diagonal side of South San Gabriel Boulevard, as staff will get to this, this project, and this project site does span a little bit over 15 years, as, as far as the initial proposal to the proposal at, at its current state. The project site shown here is located at, at the north, oh, I guess the southeast, the southwest corner of South San Gabriel Boulevard, East Live Oak, South Pine Street, to the west, and Broadway to the south. The project site does have three street frontage, the property is currently a vacant site, and demolition permits were issued in 2019. The lot size is approximately 2.89 acres, and this does not include the Rubio Wash that runs through the project site. The current zoning of the property, as mentioned, is retail-commercial, and there is an existing plan development overlay on this project's site. The overlay lines will not be shifting as part of the proposed amendments this evening, the boundary line of the overlay will remain the same. And so, as mentioned, the project was first presented to the Planning Commission in 2007, and it included an application for a tentative map, again, to subdivide for condominium purposes, a conditional use permit to allow for a mixed-use development, and then the plan development overlay, along with an environmental impact report and a adoption of a statement of overriding consideration. The project did subsequently go to the city council and received approval, and then, following the Design Review Commission, all within the same year of 2007. And then, going into 2008, the, the timelines for the entitlement approvals typically run about, about a year for a project to submit construction drawings and to obtain permits, and because of that, an additional three-years extension was applied for in 2008, which granted the Design Review Commission approval extended to 2011. And the project entitlements, they did expire, and, and so the project did have to come back to the Planning Commission in March of 2015, again, for similar applications to construct a mixed-use project. The square footage of the commercial space, approximately 16,000, with 159 residential units, and then also an addendum to the EIR that was approved, and again, back to the Design Review Commission, again, for the design approval of the project. And then, construction plans were submitted for plan check, and permits were obtained for excavation and shoring, and so now the project is into 2020. Then, in 2021, a revision to the project was filed, but this was a minor revision, it was within the building footprint that was reviewed and approved through Planning Commission and City Council. It did include a reduction in the square footage, a reduction in required of parking, but then an increase in the number of residential units, but that density and, and the square footage and the parking requirement was already analyzed in the previous approvals, and therefore the modification did come before the Planning Commission and the Design Review Commission, as the Planning Commission recalls. And then, at the end of last year, an application came back in for, for an amendment to the project, but this time around, in the scope that is being presented to the Planning Commission this evening, and that is to in, increase the, the number of stories, the square footage, and then also required number of parking, but since the project had surplus parking, it is still captured within the number of parking spaces that was originally approved and provided for the project. And so, this is an image of the site plan that was brought before the Planning Commission. This is the site plan itself. Staff's not going to go into too much detail, because the project applicant will go through each of the plans with the Planning Commission to really go step by step on the, on the modifications that are being proposed before the Planning Commission this evening, but the purpose is to show the changes, at least at the first level, residential units that were on the ground floor, at least in the main corner section of the project, will be relocated to the second floor, however, the townhome-style units that are on the southern side of the wash, those will be maintained as residential units. And here again, this is, this is a reminder, this is the current approval that is on the site. It was a, I believe, four-story project, and the parking, aside from the at-grade parking, was all subterranean. A part of the reason for the height increase was to bring one of the subterranean levels up to the second level, but again, the applicant will cover that. This table here shows the image of what's being proposed this evening, and so just a quick back and forth, this was what was approved last year, and this is what's presented this evening. The applicant team did put in effort to maintain as much of the elements as, as possible. And, and again, along with it is the revised tentative map to go along with the revised floor plans and the location of the residential units from what was approved last year. What is new with this application, due to the increase in all the development standards, is a proposed development agreement that has been provided as an attachment, and the development agreement captures, captures all the development standards that are being proposed this evening. In addition, it outlines the rules and regulations and the policies for this plan development overlay. It helps to, to outline all the development standards are being proposed this evening, as well as the project benefits that be, that are being offered by the project. These are the general plan goals, so as a mixed-use development, it, it meets the land use goal. goals, which is to support new development, economic growth, to eliminate blight, to provide for housing, and also different housing types. There are affordable units being proposed. So all of these land-use goals, housing goals, economic development goals, as well as open space and community design. What staff did not include here is really the short-term benefits of the project, as shown on the slide. The site is currently vacant. So with the approval, there will be developments, there will be the off-site improvements, infrastructure improvements, plan check and permitting fees that will go to the city, as well as impact fees that would be that would be paid. And then also, there are benefits that are outlined additionally in the development agreement. And then the long-term benefits would be the taxes that will come along with the development, which is the property tax, as well as any retail tax associated with the commercial component of the project. The environmental review for this project, the city, with the assistance of an environmental consultant, an initial study was prepared to determine project impacts, and it was identified that any potential impacts can be mitigated. Ten mitigation measures were included, and in addition to that, mitigation monitoring and reporting program is a part of the commission's approval this evening. The draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration was made available for public review and comments between August and September. The city did receive three comments, and responses to those to those comments are provided as a part of the attachments this evening. And public notification was provided, again, to property owners and tenants within a five-hundred-foot radius. Notice was posted at the site and also published in the San Gabriel Sun. The tentative map, as mentioned, is proposed as as part of this application. There are findings, a few of the findings are based on consistency with the general plan and the zoning, and that would be contingent upon receiving approval of the amendments to the plan development overlay this evening. So the recommendation before the planning commission is to adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, recommending that the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration, the mitigated monitoring and reporting program, and approve planning case numbers, ZC twenty-two dash zero zero one, DA twenty-two dash zero zero one, and TMAP twenty-two dash zero one five, again, to amend the plan development overlay zone, the development agreement, and the revised tentative map. And this is at two oh one to two seventeen South San Gabriel Boulevard, to allow for the mixed-use development, the condominium subdivision, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Sam. Take a deep breath. Any questions for on the staff report? If not, we can go straight to the applicant. Come on back.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to precede the the brains of the operation, who seated behind me, the architect. And the reason I wanted to take a few moments is to provide you with a little bit of the why, as to rationale that this project was not developed after the previous approval by this commission and certainly city council. About that time, as we're all aware, we entered into some very tough times that were provided us based on the pandemic. The information that I am providing you with regard to specifics on numbers is probably not new information that you haven't heard before with other projects, even to the point where other projects have seen their demise because of increased labor costs, material costs, and so on. The development team and the ownership went to try to figure a way to finance this project under the strenuous tax of of higher labor costs, as well as building materials. And the bottom line was, the feasibility was was not there for this project to to move forward. After crunching the numbers, they went back to trying to figure out a way to save costs on building and material, which obviously included labor. And as a result of that, you have before you a revised project that brings to the bottom line approximately an additional seven million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cost savings from the previous project, in addition to the increased project numbers for residential housing, forty-six additional units, which would obviously add to the return on the initial investment. So with that, the representative, and the, like I say, the brains of the operation, Everardo Garcia from LCRA, is going to provide you with a little bit more of how this project has evolved, that will reflect as the numbers that that I just shared with you in cost savings and the opportunity for a positive cash flow, if we're allowed to move forward. Do you have any questions?
We'll have a lot of questions, but I don't know if it's appropriate to go ahead and have your architect first.
Yeah, some of them might be answered in the presentation.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chair and Commissioner. My name's Everardo Garcia. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to present this project. Samantha, thank you for the thorough presentation. So what I will concentrate on is really the reasoning or the changes that we've made to the project in order to make it really financially feasible. Let's see if I can get this to work. As we look at the project, this is the ground floor of the project. Overall, the the layout of the project remains the same, and we try to keep the project as close as possible to the originally approved project. So what you see is, on the upper left-hand corner, which is the the townhomes, which face Live Oak, those will remain the same, stays the same as originally approved. And then the four-story building on the left, lower left, which faces San Gabriel, that will also remain the same. So the main structure, which is the large triangular-shaped structure there, is the one that received the the largest revisions as part of this VE review. One of the largest changes here has been the parking. Originally, this project had two levels of underground parking, with one level of on-grade parking. As part of the review, shoring became a large expense for this project. So we looked at the project as and studied an opportunity to reduce shoring overall on this project. And by doing that, we reduced the levels of parking. We pulled them away from the perimeter of the building, so we can avoid the actual use of shoring throughout. So in doing that, by reducing the lower levels, we still have two levels of underground parking. We have on-grade parking, and because of the reduced space below, we did introduce a second level above-grade of parking. What we also did was remove the residential units along the wash and on Live Oak, that kind of turned the corner. Those ended up going up to the upper levels. What has remained as part of this project is, on the lower left-hand corner, is a public plaza, which becomes a nice amenity for the community. That still remains. And on the upper left-hand area by the townhomes, there's a small pocket park, which also remains, and it will be available to the community. The commercial along San Gabriel also remains, which we hope will create a little bit more activity and pedestrian movement along San This is the new second floor. In here, we introduced a new level of parking. And on the left-hand, on the right-hand side, we introduced some residential units, which actually face Live Oak. Part of the addition of these units was to break, really to hide the parking level. So from the pedestrian level on Live Oak, it still looks more residential, and you don't see the parking structure. What we were also able to do on this level is, on the lower left-hand corner, we were able to introduce some additional interior amenity space, such as gym and common space in that area, which we didn't have before. Now, this is the new third floor, which, as you can see, follows a very similar layout as the original project. Some of the units were adjusted in order to make them work. There were some larger units which we broke down. And what we also did as part of this review, we actually enhanced the landscape on this main courtyard area. This becomes a main feature for the tenants of the building. So we were able to adjust it and create a little bit more landscape and more amenity, exterior amenity opportunities. As part of this version, we still maintain the pedestrian bridge that crosses from the courtyard across the wash and to the pocket park. It creates that connection to those three units as well, allows those units to be able to use the amenities in this building. And this just shows the additional floors. They just follow the same layout. And then this is the additional level that was added in order to accommodate some of the additional units in the project. This represents the the old, the original parking plan. As you can see, compared to the new P one level, it is slightly narrow, smaller on the perimeter. It did shrink. Part of that was to reduce the shoring. And as we go down to P two, it shrunk a little bit more, allowing us to do more of a lay flat and avoid shoring for the process. This exhibit starts to show the difference in the exterior elevation. Originally, it was three levels of residential over a tall one-story parking level. What we're proposing are four levels of residential over two levels of above-grade parking. We try to continue the same architectural style that we feel fits very well with San Gabriel and the Mission District. What we did is, it still incorporated the strong base. Originally, it was a tall one bay, one-story base. What we did was added the second level within that base and created still the strong two-story base, which becomes a nice way to break down the mass of the building and bring it down to a little bit more of a pedestrian scale. Beyond that, we have the the new four-story residential, carrying over the same architectural features from before, just trying to keep it still within the same flavor of what was approved. This is the Live Oak elevation. Again, very similar treatment. We did try to add detail on the lower level to enhance the pedestrian experience of the building. And this is the wash elevation. Even though the units were removed along the wash on the lower level, we still tried to activate the elevation with openings into the garage, while still giving them a little character and continuing the style of the building. This is an exhibit of the colored elevation on San Gabriel. The one above is the previous approved elevation, and the one below is the new one. And as you can see, we tried to continue the the flavor of the architectural style. We tried to soften the elevation with the arcade on the ground floor, which I think will create a nice commercial zone. People will be able to walk in the arcade, create a nice feel. We have some plaza at the main entry to the residential, and the larger plaza, which we see being able to be utilized with outdoor dining along that area, which was originally the wash. As part of the project, it was covered over, and we created that plaza area, which I think will become a really nice exterior experience for the residents, as well as for the community. And then this just shows again the images of the rendering of the original and the the new project. That concludes my presentation, and I will be available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions?
Have you all retained a commercial broker for the...
I don't think at the moment they have a commercial broker. I know they've been looking at potential, they are looking at some commercial and some restaurant opportunities, but I think they haven't gone that deep into it.
It's important, I think, when you look at the number of units, you've got some work going, depending on how they're occupied, five hundred percent, five hundred percent residents.
Mm-hmm.
And they can use, they can benefit from certain kinds of services, so that they don't have to go too far to get them. And that would still bring in outside community interest in some of those uses.
Mm-hmm.
Not, not, I'm not talking about the restaurant, I'm talking about the other kinds of services.
More service opportunities, or something that would provide things for the residents that they would use daily. I think that would be the goal, to be able to find different stores or amenities that could come in to provide kind of the daily needs of the residents, because that just creates a nicer community.
And if it's a, if a use that the community doesn't otherwise have, you might be able to bring in, you know, with the commercials, parking, people outside the project.
Right.
To take advantage of, particularly tenants that are interested.
No, I think that would be great. And it's definitely something I think the team will look into as the project hopefully progresses, to get the right type of storefronts into this this building, to make it really a viable community.
I have another question, if I could.
Sure.
The original project had twelve modern units, and you're proposing eighteen modern units. But at the same time, you're actually getting, you're actually asking for an eighty-two percent increase in total square footage. So to me, eighty-two percent of twelve units would be somewhere closer to twenty-two, twenty-four, modern units rather than eighteen. So pure ratio basis.
Right.
With the amount of square footage, square footage extra, do you want less?
Well, I think on on the amount of units, there wasn't a particular formula, especially when the original project was proposed. So I believe our team just proposed what we felt was a good addition, add to the to the affordable housing in terms of units.
Well, one, Commissioner, I would like to suggest that that eighteen could actually bump up to somewhere around twenty-two, to be, again, because you're asking for eighty-two percent more square footage, the same ratio from twelve to twenty-two.
I think it's something that... I think it's something that we might be able to consider, you know, depending on what the commissioners feel. I think the number we proposed, we thought was a nice, fair upgrade, but we also are open to your suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Yeah, it's kind of a springboard to one of my concerns was while I appreciate an 8% percentage of moderate income units, I'll be frank in that it's concerning to me that it's not higher and that it's moderate income and not low income. The fact of the matter is, is that according to RENA numbers in our housing element, 58% of our residents are considered low-income residents. So moderate income units are 120% of the area median income, which a family of four, going on 2023 numbers, would have to be making almost $120,000 to afford a moderate income unit. And, you know, a low, someone, a family of four, to qualify for low income has to be making almost $100,000. So that drives home the point. So the fact that the applicant is not utilizing the density bonus to get some of these concessions by right, instead chose the route to go development agreement, I have to consider the return in benefits to the majority of our residents. And so I'm not, I'm asking for significant concessions here. I'm not saying it's a bad project. Everybody knows we need the housing. But the fact of the matter is, the majority of those units are not going to be affordable to vast majority of our residents here. So I'm worried about the potential consequences of squeezing out our residents. I also, we don't know what the applicant is proposing to sell and estimating going to sell the units for. So you told us what the savings would be with these concessions that you're asking for, but we don't, we don't really know what your profit's going to be. We'll take your word at, you know, that, so I also had concerns about the fact that an EIR was done for a much, a much smaller project in 2006. And this one has significantly increased in size and it doesn't have an EIR but an MND. And we had one letter, a very detailed letter. So we have experts with, that wrote in that said, you need to do an EIR. Your consultants addressed some of those questions and said, well, no, we don't, and here's why. But I'm not sure under the fair argument standard that they don't have valid points in the other letter. So, and in the previous EIR, unmitigatable consequences were noted as short-term construction emissions and cumulative development. So, I mean, I would, I would like to see, in order to feel like, not just the developer is going to make a profit, but that the residents of the city who are majority low-income residents are also going to see a fair share of low-income units in there. I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to the extra units that would be required to make that happen, but I would like to see the majority of our residents qualify for either low or very low income. Most of them are not going to be able to afford moderate income. So I think the percentage of moderate is too low, but I also prefer that it not be moderate, that it be low income. And I would ask the developer to consider that, I guess, tonight.
I represent Rubio Village LLC, and I appreciate your patience on this. I wasn't around early on. I don't know if I would have the staying power to last the 15, 18 years this has been around, but I came on board with the development team around 2017, 2018, went through significant hardship. I think everyone has spoken the issues that we've done, evaluations to help reduce cost and allow us to get this to pencil with the increase in units and a reduction in cost, although some of that being offset by the increases that we've done. Initially, I believe there were 159 units, if I'm not mistaken, in the first approval, of which 12 were affordable. And I termed affordable to me, I don't have the knowledge of whether this would be LI, LI or moderate income, but we had 159 units, 12 affordable. We came to you last year with an increase to 179 units and we still had the 12. We now have 225 units and I'm not aware of any formula that the city had for determining the ratio of affordable housing to the number of market rate units. If we took the 179 and 159 and the 12, we came up with 8%. And that's where we came up with increasing from 12 to 18. And so that's where, that's where we came up with that formula. So as I understand it from you, you're looking for a formula of around 10% or...
From the way I read it, the difference between the 2022 project and the 2023 project in terms of total square foot is like an 82% increase.
Is what?
Is an 82% increase. To go from 168 to 306 is a large increase. So I just look at it as the same percentage should be added in terms of total on those areas.
Just wanted to clarify that. In terms of square footage on the project, I think what we're growing from, we're actually, we were originally 156,203 residential and we are proposing 185,937.
Yeah, residential.
Yes, if staff can clarify, any building square footage that is above grade factors into the overall square footage. Correct.
Parking. So in terms of the residential, we would be from the originally approved 156,203, we're proposing 185,937.
The rest of its park.
And the rest, correct.
I'll just add, in the original 2006 project, 15% of affordable housing was going to, was the agreed-upon amount. So the 15% was the original project. Now, now we're at 8%. So I guess we have two questions. The percentage, but then also including some low income as opposed to just moderate income. And we, I know you have your numbers, but we, how something pencils out, I don't know what necessarily what that means in terms of profit margin. That wasn't shared with us. We do know how much you've, you gave us a number like seven million something on what your cost savings by getting the concessions that you're requesting, which include an additional level and some, you know, variations in the parking, how the parking's provided. So I just, I personally think that the, there needs to be more affordable units there in the development agreement. I would like to see more affordable units and not just moderate, but some low-income units. And so, I mean, I'll be frank, we don't have an affordable housing ordinance. So when large projects come before us and a development agreement is proposed, this is one way that we can assist our residents who are in a low-income category, who make up a majority of our residents. So that's, that's what I'm concerned about and that's what I'm asking.
Okay, well, these are for rent. They're not for sale.
Yes.
We have mapped it as condos, but we're building these as apartments. I don't have a problem with adding additional affordable units. We've kind of followed the guidelines that were established throughout this process. So that's where we came up with the addition of the six units and they were moderate income. Are we, if you're talking about low income, are you talking about very low income?
I mean, I would, the majority of our residents either qualify for low or very low. I would be, I would be simply, I would be happy with, if some low income were included in there. That's, to me, at least, going to be within reach of some, of a majority of our residents here. And I appreciate that you're going by what staff and whatever during the discussion. We weren't, we aren't privy to those discussions and so we just get notified of these projects the same time you do when the agenda comes out. So this is the time where we're discussing. And we also recommend to staff, tell them what our preferences are during this stage. So I understand that. And, but I'm asking now, as frankly, I will, I will make a, I had planned on making a proposal to amend the development agreement and the conditions of approval to include low-income housing in the project. That was going to be a motion that I make. So, but I want to see, you know, if the developer is willing to accommodate those.
Well, how many units are we talking about? What percentage have we talked about? We have the 18 that we can all say is moderate income, correct? Or do you want to include low in the 18?
Well, let's, yeah, I'm open to discussion. I mean, what, is it, would, Jerry, please chime in with your thoughts are as well. But I, I mean, I'm open to making, rather than moderate, they're all low income or doing, increasing the amount of the 18 and including some low income in with the moderate.
Well, if we're talking low income, I don't have a problem with half of them being low income, half of them moderate income. I don't have a problem with that.
Jerry, what are your...
My suggestion number was to be more like 22 rather than 18.
Okay, so can we agree that we'll do 16 moderate income and six low income and make it a total of 22? Done.
Okay.
If that'll get me going on this project. Okay, so Samantha, you'd modify the development agreement or what?
No, this would be subject to further discussion by the planning commission.
We need to agree on this.
There's still additional commissioners and...
I appreciate your willingness to move off that number.
Yeah, it's a partnership deal. And, you know, like I say, this has been a long, long time and Alex is committed to it. At least you've got to give him credit, he keeps coming back. But, you know, we had a project in Irvine, we had to take over and we got to put this on hold and we got caught in all of this turmoil stuff and had to do some thing to get it to work. I mean, it's still essentially the same look and, but yeah, if that, if that makes everybody comfortable, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, well, our other commissioners will discuss, but I appreciate that and I'm happy with that amount and I appreciate you accommodating.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. We need to open up the public comment period here. Do you have any speaker cards?
I only have one, which we received through the email.
Email? Okay, go ahead and read it.
And this comes from Marjan Abuboe. It says, "On behalf of Safer and its members who live, work, and recreate in and around the city of San Gabriel, Safer respectfully appeals the commission's decision to approve the Rubio Village project and instead requests the city to prepare an EIR pursuant to CEQA. Under the fair argument standard, an EIR is required if substantial evidence in the record indicates that a project may have adverse environmental effects, even if contrary evidence exists to support the agency's decision. Safer will highlight a couple of reasons why an EIR is required. First, the MND fails to accurately describe the project site. Case law makes clear that every CEQA document must include a description of the physical environmental conditions as they exist at the time CEQA review commences. Here, our expert wildlife biologist, Dr. Shawn Smallwood, identified the presence of legally protected bird species socializing, foraging, and relying on the project site as vital habitat. Provided that the Rubio Wash's proximity, the project will have significant impacts to habitat and wildlife that the MND failed to analyze. Unfortunately, the consultants at Kimley Horn misinterpret the law because according to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, birds of prey, including the American kestrel, are a valuable resource that are protected under state law. Additionally, the document fails to explain who drafted the responses and whether the author is qualified to speak on biological impacts. Secondly, an EIR should be prepared to evaluate the project's air quality impacts. Despite Safer's experts supplying substantial evidence that the project will result in health risks, the MND didn't prepare an HRA nor did the city incorporate related mitigation measures in its conditions of approval. Safer thus maintains that the project cannot proceed under an MND and that the city must instead prepare an EIR."
Is that the only one? Okay. Sam, can you respond to that? Can you help us out understanding the difference between the approvals? I mean, this thing's been on the board since 2007. I think it's been pretty thoroughly investigated, but can you give us a little bit of the history of where this has been?
If it's acceptable to the planning commission, we do have a representative from Kimley Horn this evening that analyzed the impacts and worked on the responses to the comments received.
Oh, excellent. Come forward, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Heidi Rose. I am a project manager at Kimley Horn and I did work on this project. I think the easy one to take, and I think someone raised earlier, you know, why was an EIR prepared 16 years ago that had found impacts with air quality and now we don't? And that has everything to do with the state regulations that have cleaned up the fleet of construction equipment that are available. And so over 16 years, everyone's benefited from that. So the analysis has been done, excuse me, to standards, to the highest level of professional standards and found no significant impact.
Okay, so looking back to 2007, 2010, when the first batch of these went through, the requirements were different?
The threshold has remained unchanged. The South Coast Air Quality Management District established the thresholds, it's in pounds per day, for a construction period and operation. Those have been the same since 1993. So the standard for determining a significant impact has remained unchanged for three decades. What has changed is the level of excavation, as they explained, with a smaller footprint in a peak day, but that the equipment, the bulldozers and everything else that are available... in a peak day, but that the equipment, the bulldozers and everything else that are available as part of the fleet here in California are much, much cleaner, what we call tier four, tier three, tier two, these are standards. And that's really because the Air Resources Board has pushed this as a statewide mitigation measure.
So we're testing cleaner as opposed to changing the requirements?
Yep. They're making them cleaner, they're running them cleaner. That's what's available to a project applicant such as this when they hire a builder. That fleet that they use is just naturally cleaner and newer. It's, you know, it's very similar to automobiles. It's not dissimilar to a nineteen eighty-four vehicle, you know, that we brought in smog testing, et cetera, and your, your car today is a tenth, generally, you know, of the emissions it was, you know, three decades ago.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anybody out there? You good? Okay, if we're going to close the public hearing and open this up for commissioner discussion, yeah, I've been around long enough to have been through all of these hearings. So, I started before this. And we have, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the old bowling lot, or bowling alley lot?
It's for Valmer's drugstore in the corner.
Right, right, the drugstore, okay. Yeah, this thing has been in development for a long time, and, and I think equally as long it's, it's, it's been a dirt lot. So, I think the, the opportunity here for the city of San Gabriel to accomplish actually multitude of things, you know, we, we have a housing crisis here in California, and this is a, you know, for our, for our little city, this is a big step forward for, for, for meeting some of our targets, as unreasonable as some of them are. But I think when I look at the evolution of this going from a same footprint, but with a different solution, and going higher and, and, and more dense, I think it's a, I think, I think it's a, it's an attractive solution. I think it's a highest and best use for, for the, for the property. And I also have, want to commend Samantha and her group for, for working on this thing creatively and, and coming up with a development agreement and, and some of these things that, that would even make this development possible. So, I know that we have an issue with affordable housing in our community. I think this is a, a good faith effort to, to resolve that, and I'd love to hear anybody else's opinion on this one. Jerry, you want to go next?
Sure. I haven't been here since two thousand and seven, but I'm pretty sure I saw it in twenty-seventeen. If I think back to how long I've been doing this, too.
I think you might have.
So this is probably the third time, I guess, I've seen the project, at least. And, look, if we were to get something built that you guys are proposing, that's a huge step forward for the community. And, you know, I, I think it's, with some of the solutions that are being proposed on affordable housing and on different ideas for potential commercial uses, I think giving this the opportunity to go forward is, is a win for, is a win for San Gabriel.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Matt?
First, kudos to the architect. I think it's brilliant, the changes that you made to, to save money, and I know shoring is super expensive, so I was not here back in two thousand and seven when this was first proposed, but I've been in the construction industry long enough to notice really smart value engineering decisions to maintain the beauty of the building, and it's a really beautiful building. You started off with a good, good-looking idea. So I think this would be a great jewel for San Gabriel to have, and I really admire the tenacity to stick with the project through the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight financial crisis, and then through COVID, and now we're here, and we've got skyrocketing interest rates, and, you know, a lot of developers would have walked away. So the fact that you're here and still trying to do it and providing affordable housing is incredible, absolutely incredible. So my hat's off to you guys, this should definitely be approved and get under construction as soon as possible.
Thanks, Matt. Sean?
Yeah. You know, I, I, I want to thank the applicant for, for their willingness to, to work with us on the affordable numbers. I appreciate that, and I, with, you know, I, I will make the motion to add those extra units with an inclusion of the low income that we talked about as well, and, and with that, I, I will vote to approve. I believe that those extra affordable units, which include low income, will, will be a great benefit to the community, and I think that both the developer and, you know, our low-income community will be able to benefit better that way, so, and I, I do hope that it gets built now, after fifteen years, so.
Just to be clear, that, is that a motion to approve the recommended action with twenty-two affordable units, half?
I'll read that into the, into the motion.
Make sure that's what your intention was.
Well, yeah, I didn't know when.
Twenty-two and half and half, is that what you were?
No, what we came, what we came up with is twenty-two total units of affordable housing, sixteen at the moderate level, and six at the low.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make clear. Thank you.
Correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Gabriel, recommending that the city council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve planning case numbers, numbers, ZC twenty-two dash zero zero one, DA twenty-two dash zero zero one, and TMAP twenty-two dash zero one five, to amend an existing planned development overlay zone, development and revise, yeah, development agreement and revised tentative tract map, number seven three one five three for a mixed-use development at two oh one to two one seven, South San Gabriel Boulevard, subject to the recommendation, recommended conditions of approval, including the increasing the total units of low, or lower income to six, twenty-two total units, sixteen moderate income, and six lower income. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. Do we have a vote?
Chair Clowitter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
And Commissioner Crapman?
Yes.
Vote is four to zero, motion carried.
Okay. Let's get this belt this time. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
I think you said that the last.
I may have.
I'm tired.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Okay, I'm going to throw it over to you, Sam.
Well, no comments, Chair.
Got a, okay. And commissioners, any items that you want to bring up?
I'll just say, I attended the, I know I'm, it's been about a month now, but I attended the Beer and Dumpling Festival. I thoroughly enjoy that every year. I'm really glad the city does that, so keep up the good work. And I also want to thank staff. I had a lot of questions that, about these, this particular agenda, and they were very expeditious in responding, and so I appreciate all their hard work, and that's all.
Okay. We've got, we've got a great group here, so, want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels if you're on the road, and then we will, hopefully, I'll be back here on December eleventh at six thirty for our next meeting. We are adjourned till then.